Call the meeting to order at seven oh two P M. Are there any additions or corrections or anything that anyone wants to make for tonight's agenda?
The only thing I was gonna mention is to talk about our Friday night's pizza party. I don't know where you want to put that.
We can put that under new business.
Okey doke.
Okay, any, any other changes that we want to make? And I will make a note to myself on mine. Otherwise, I will blow right past it. Okay. With that, hearing no other changes need to be made brings us to our time for opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. Is there any, is there anyone here who would like to use this time to say something? Okay. Hearing nothing. We'll go ahead and move to the approval of the minutes for the November fifteenth board meeting. Are there any any changes or amendments anyone wants to make to those?
Yes, I'm having trouble finding it. Janie, maybe you can help me. It's a phrase it refers to. It says that it was agreed that we would pay L F I fifty percent. I don't know where that shows up. I think we should use the name of library furniture.
Library Furniture, Library Furnishings International.
Yeah, and fifty percent of the, is that the Stro Room furniture cost?
I believe it was, yes.
Yeah, so let's be specific, because six months from now, nobody will know what that means. We should probably put what that fifty percent is if you have that handy. Or Katie can get that.
Yeah, I can, it's. Yeah, I don't have the number off the top of my head. It's six thousand some.
Yeah, so let's just fill in those blanks. So it's, since it's a financial thing, we voted out.
Okay.
Other than that, they look great. Thank you.
Okay.
I can do that.
Move to approve the minutes with the clarifications Kathy just mentioned.
Second.
Okay, move from Bonnie, second from John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meetings for November fifteenth as amended have been approved. Okay, so that will take us to the financial reports for November, and I'll go ahead and share my screen for that. Oh, I've got too many windows open. Okay, here we go. Okay, let me scroll down to those. Can everyone see my, see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, so.
Can you make it as large as you can, please?
All right, that's, and then let me, there we go, okay. Um, okay, so a few notes about the November financials, the first of which is that we did not receive any property tax revenue in November, although this was also the case in twenty twenty one. Percentage wise, we're right around the same place that we were a year ago in terms of the in terms of the amount that we had received last year. This time, we had received about seventy nine percent of the property tax revenue, and here we've received just over eighty one percent. That's this first line right here. So I just wanted to, wanted to highlight that, but that, that again is fitting with what we what Jillian, fits with, with the money that we received last year. And to date, we've received we've received over eight hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars in property tax revenue. I'm sorry, did I cut someone off? I thought I might have heard someone. No, okay. The second thing that I wanted to mention, as usual, passport fees are, we almost set a record in terms of the number of applications that we took in, in November. We took in, I believe, eighty four, or we processed eighty four applications. Our standing record is eighty five. And that was set back in September of this year. And what I particularly want to point out is that for this year's budget, we had, we had very conservatively estimated or accounted or accounted for fifteen thousand dollars in passport revenue. At the, as of the end of November, we have received over sixteen thousand. So we are, we, you know, we've, we've already surpassed what we, what we budgeted to bring in for this year. We I don't know, and Martha will keep changing our updated our projected amounts of how much we're going, we would theoretically bring in. Right now, I think we're, we're still in a, right around, I think, twenty seven thousand estimated to bring in for the, for the fiscal year. So, yeah, it's yeah, it's, it's just been, business has just been enormous with this.
Are we able to keep up with demand?
Um, we are. Yes, we, for the, for the most part, we have, yeah, we're, we're we're able to see. I think we're, we're able to see most, most people who call, who make an appointment or call in. The one thing that helps us is that we do have the flexibility. Or we, a lot of times have the flexibility if, for our scheduled hours, if our scheduled hours don't work for someone, a lot of times we're able to make adjustments so that they can maybe come in on at a different time that we don't normally have, have scheduled, but we're, we have available that week. So we do try to stay flexible with our, with the applicants. One area that some of our applicants have mentioned, a lot of families are looking for evening and weekend hours, which of course is understandable. But that we're not able to accommodate as frequently. Evening hours, we, we usually have a couple of days a week that we can do evening hours. Weekends have always, we've never really had availability during those times, just because we don't have, we don't have our passport agent scheduled on weekends typically. But occasionally, if we do have someone who's scheduled to work a Sunday, we will add extra availability for that particular day, but but overall, we are, we seem to be, you know, we're, we seem to be meeting demand as well as we can.
And we, we have three agents right now?
Yes.
Okay, and Eric had been, so Renee could sit then as a fourth.
Yes.
Great.
And Katie, how much to, on average, do we get per passport? Is it like thirty two, thirty three bucks?
It's, the fee is thirty, the fee is thirty five dollars per application. The shipping fees for mailing out the applications comes from that fee. A regular just priority flat rate shipping label is nine dollars and ninety cents. And we can fit up to seven applications in one envelope. So, you know, if we do, you know, a big, if we do a bunch of people in one day, we're not paying shipping for all of those applications, yeah. The other applicants can also opt to use Priority Express shipping through the post office, which is a lot more expensive. In that case, we charge them the cost of the shipping label, which is twenty seven ninety for a Priority Express flat rate envelope, and we charge them that in addition to the standard thirty five dollar fee, which is mandated by the State Department.
Okay, so you, you guys have nearly processed like around five hundred passports through it this year, or this, this fire budget year.
Sounds about right. Martha, does that sound about right? You, Martha maintains the spreadsheet, so.
It sounds, it sounds correct. And I do know that as the last time that I did the cost assessment of the, like, the shipping versus the fees that we were getting, it was, we were still, it was like ninety four percent, or something like that. Anna says it's four hundred and eighty applications.
Okay.
Thank you, Anna.
Pretty good.
Yeah, and almost every appointment that I take, at some point during the appointment, the applicant or the family mentions how fantastic it is that the library offers this service. Especially with Shields Township directing all of their traffic to us right now, because they're currently unable to do, to continue doing passports. A lot, we're good, like I said, we're seeing a lot more, you know, we're, we're seeing a lot more passport activity. In fact, more than we saw when Eric was, when Eric was regularly doing passports here as well. And we've, we've been able to step up the, the, the number, the number of appointments that we're, that we're doing, so. All right, any other questions about passports or anything else related to that? Okay. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention on here, and of course, here we go. Under the miscellaneous expenses, you'll see a much larger amount than we, for this last month than we usually have. That was primarily for the compensation for travel for our director candidates to come interview. So those, so that was put under that particular budget line.
Okay, and then I'm gonna kind of move around here a little bit. So up at hospitality program supplies and
Yes.
So that's a five hundred dollar budget item, is that right?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
Yeah, so Janie, we had talked about hospitality, so that's something we can use at this time. And Kate, just scroll up a little bit, because, or down, like, go back to where we were, because I had a question about below, okay, so. So we have not received the District sixty five donation.
For the, for the I G A?
Yeah.
I actually just got an email from, from someone in the admin office, I think yesterday or today, about that, that obviously got pushed to the side with all the other stuff going on. So I'm, I'm gonna reach out, reach out to him this week and send them that invoice.
Okay, and then the high school as well?
Yes.
Okay, and actually the the Montessori school.
Uh, yeah, that, that one I have to double check, because the Forest Bluff, I believe is on a slight, is on a different schedule in terms of their, their I G A agreement.
Okay.
I think the last time Eric, I'll have, I'll have to double, to double check on that.
And then under restricted donations and, sorry, I'm having trouble. Wouldn't the, the foundation recently made a donation to ten thousand dollars to the library and for the Stro Room, wouldn't that go in there, or where, where did that show up?
Let me, that shows up in that, here we go, under the library grants and gifts fund.
Under revenues, okay.
Under, yeah, restricted donations.
Good, good. Okay.
Okay.
Um, Katie, just, I've got one question as well. When you go to the, the, the page one, and you've, and I know you've got it down in your report, the this, the Capita grant shows that that we received eighty two, eighty three.
Yeah.
Sixty on there. And if you go to pay, go up to the top, you, it shows that it's, it's, it's showing a Capita grant for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one here.
Yeah.
Is there, is, are they two different things, or are they, should one be in, in?
One place, you know? To, and I was gonna say, I don't have a good answer to that, but that was something that I noticed that the last year's is showing up under this line, whereas the other one was showing up under the other line. I, I am not sure. I can absolutely double check on that.
Yeah, I, I think one is, is last year's, and it's, and it may be put into the wrong place, because, because you're waiting on that for January thirtieth, I think, is on your notes, is it?
That is for the application, for the, for the next application. But yeah, we've, we've received the, the eighty two sixty something, whatever that number was, that, that's our most recent per, per Capita grant.
Okay.
Award. And so we received that back in, I think, like, September or something like that.
Okay. Yeah, they're under two different accounts, so I'm just wondering if they, they, they got mixed up, and that's why they're in there, or whether that's the, the, the way is, it's, but it was just something that looked different.
Yeah.
From one line to the next.
Yeah, that was something that, that I had noticed earlier, so, yeah, I can, I can definitely look into that.
And where are we with the, last month we talked, and Renee, this is something for you to tune into, the Capita grant application is due the end of January. So there was some kind of decision whether that would be something you would complete, or that staff would complete or have worked on into January. So Katie, where are we on that?
Um, well, that actually, I was gonna say, that's, I've got that list as the first item of new business, but basically, the the applicant, the application deadline is January thirtieth. And one, one of the filing requirements is that the trustees need to be given an opportunity to review the application. So right now, what the, what the plan is, is to have that the plan is, is to have a draft of that ready, but for the January monthly meeting. That way, that will give us time to give staff time to take, to, for us to take a look at the application and confer, and it will also give us time to talk to Renee. And we can and we can pull, pull together the, the application for this, for this upcoming year. But yeah, right now, that, that's gonna be the, I think that's gonna be the most, the most workable approach.
Okay, and whenever that draft is ready, we get it to the trustees, even if it's before the full package, just so we have time to go through it.
Yep, we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other questions about the November financials? All right, with that, I would be looking for a motion to approve the November financial reports.
I'll move to approve the November financial results.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion from Bill, second from Kathy. All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Sorry, let me just move my little grid so I can see people, come on. All right, trustee Meyer Hoff.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Shaw.
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry, we went through revenues. We really didn't go through expenses. I know we're gonna do checks next. That's okay, I just I, we, that might be perfectly fine. I actually was one of the sign, people who signed off the checks this month, so I I know what a lot of the checks are, but I just, I think we got a little ahead of ourselves.
No, that's, um, the, I, I did mention the the miscellaneous expenses, that was one of the that was, that was one of the line items that was a little bit more outstanding.
That's right, that's right, you did, you did.
Yeah, the, the rest of the, the rest of the stuff is pretty, is pretty standard, but for, you know, month to, for our month to month expenses, but if there's, if there's something that
I have no questions on the monthly expense of having signed the checks, I'm all good. And I say aye, sorry for the, this, this, I know this has not happened in like two years, or a year and a half. Wait a minute.
Our record.
All right, and then with Bonnie is an I, and then trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Okay, the financials have been approved. So yes, well, moving on to the the check register, there we go. Um, again, most of these are pretty, are pretty standard for our, for our usual monthly expenses. A couple items that I wanted to point out. Um, what we do, again, we do have the checks listed for our director candidates to, for the so those are listed on here. One of the, one item I wanted to point out for Henkel Electric for, oops, one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. This was for the replacement of several outdoor lighting fixtures that Eric had. Eric had gotten that scheduled with Henkel before he left. The lighting fixtures just weren't weren't updated or replaced until, until early November. So that was, that was something that was agreed upon earlier in the year, and then and then we had, we had the mountain November for that. And then the other one, oh, and I just wanted to point out for S M C Construction Services, this three thousand two hundred fifty five dollar and fifty five cent check, that is the final, there's the remainder of the payment for the Stro Reading Room, and that was what was left over for the payment to S M C after the foundation's ten thousand dollar contribution. So that was the, the library's portion. So that, that check has been, that check has been issued. And then yeah, those, those were two of the main items that I wanted to highlight. Everything else, like I said, is pretty is pretty standard. Were there any, any questions or anything about any of the checks listed here? Okay. All right, hearing no other questions. Um, I would be looking for a motion to approve the checks with checked numbers one five four one eight and one five four two zero through one five four five eight.
I so move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion from Bonnie, second from Bill. Trustee Meyer Hoff.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Shaw.
I have no questions, aye.
Miki. Trustee Church.
Aye.
And trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Okay, and I think I, I think I got everyone one to, yes, okay. Um, okay, so that completes the financial report, which will take us up to our committee reports. So we had two committees that met in the last month. Here, I'll, no. Said, no, I don't want a new share. Sorry. Stop share, that's what I want. Okay. Um, so we had our two commit, our, our two committees that met this last month, Human Resources and Special Topics. Jenny, do you want to go ahead and give the update for the Human Resources Committee?
Um, sure. Our committee met to prepare for our, the upcoming transition at the library and to prepare for Renee's arrival. So Katie and Martha and Kathy and Bonnie are really taking the lead in getting everything ready for the upcoming arrival. We're really excited to see you, Renee. So basically, we just created a checklist for what we're gonna need to do in order to be prepared.
Yes, and I was gonna say, that actually reminds me, I was able to transfer the checklist that Martha had initially compiled and put it in a Google Doc that I can share with the rest of the committee, so that way we're all, we can all be looking at the same document and have it updated in real time, so. That would, I figured that would probably be, be easiest. So I'll get that out to everyone, I'll get that out to everyone tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Problem.
And that, yes, that takes care of my report.
All right. Um, and then with the, for the Special Topics Committee, Kathy, do you want to take?
Sure, yeah, we met a bit ago. Anything that hasn't happened the last week is a bit ago these days. And our main topic was locating the computers in a better location with a lot of factors that came up. The staff has done a great job of pointing out to us, you know, access and electric just basic flow of the building and what would work here and what might not work there. So it was agreed upon that we would put them in front of the whatever, get the, part of some of the checkout movies and games over there, I guess they are.
The audiobooks and the TV series.
Yeah, so she come in the door of the main door, they're to your right. We did, to your left, we did a lot of measuring, and it, I would say temporarily, we decided to relocate the carols. So we're now looking at the back of the carols. I haven't been over there to see it yet, but I know that the furniture was moved this week. Sierra did that for us, I presume, so everything's up and running smoothly.
Yeah.
You said you had, okay, we saw comments from the public, but one really negative.
Yes, I, this, I will say, I, I take that negative comment with a grain of salt. It's not the first negative comment we have received from this particular person about various things, so. I, I, I take it with a grain of salt. Most, most of what we've received are either comments like, oh, you moved the computers, or just kind of general, why did you move the computers? So we've just been telling people that we've had some issues with the computers being as close as they were to the staircase, and so we've moved, moved them, moved them over here. But other than that, haven't had a ton of comment either way.
Yeah, I think for everyone's information, it's pretty generally agreed, we would like to have a flat table workstation kind of a thing for that area, for those computers. So I think we're looking for that and just figuring where in the budget can fit and
Yeah, I was gonna say, the, I know we are over our budget line for library furnishings because of the Stro Room furniture. However, we do have a table that is, it's, I believe it's a little bit longer than the carols placed next to each other, but not significantly. Theoretically, we, or that table is currently up in the mezzanine. We could theoretically move that down there. The only question would, I'm because of where the outlet is in the floor, navigating all of the cords and stuff becomes a little bit of an issue, but that, that's an option for us that we, that we could take a look at.
Yeah, I think nonetheless, we've got a budget we're about to jump into, and the fiscal year is not as far as where it used, used to be. So I think definitely we can get that scheduled, so find the appropriate piece of furniture for that spot. We mix and match right now, that'll be fine, but hopefully by spring, we'll definitely know the size and efficiency and functionality. It is a weird, for those of you who haven't seen, there's like, the outlet is just in a very awkward little place, and so.
Yeah.
That's something to be worked with.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, Anna just mentioned that the table up in the mezzanine is a five foot table, so I know there was something that we were comparing it to when we were moving stuff around, and I know we were trying so many different configurations that it was hard to keep track of what was what.
Moved that table downstairs?
We did, and
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah, and there was, there was, I thought there was another table that we hypothetically measured, or another option that we measured, but so much of that ended up being a blur before we decided on just moving the carols, but
I wonder if the museum has anything we can borrow?
I don't know, actually.
Kinda, kinda doubt it. Knowing what they have, it's, it's probably in worse shape than anything we have.
Okay, all right. Well, nonetheless, it's practically January, which means it's practically April, so before.
Renee, you're on mute.
I didn't know if I was able to speak in these meetings, but, um, I do wanna add that Rails, um, is often selling furniture for a reduced rate. Um, and if they still post online like they did prior to my being there, um, that could be another option for us. Um, oftentimes libraries going through remodels or reselling furniture, just giving it away for free. So that could be another opportunity.
Yeah, I think that's actually, yeah, that's how we got the carols. Um, at the time, um, when we were talking about moving it, uh, or when we initially talked about moving the computers. I know Anna was keeping her eye on the message boards, but we didn't see anything at that time. Uh, crop up that, uh, uh, that would have fit our needs. But yeah, that's, that's always, that's always an option. We can, we can keep, uh, keep an eye on.
Yeah, well, certainly, we're, I think we're making progress. We've got, I think, a better location. You all will tell us if we're right or wrong about that, um, and patient feedback and how it's working. And, um, did we, what did we put over by the other entrance? Are there chairs?
The book bike.
Oh, the bike, that's right, it's a good place.
We just, yeah, we just switched out the bike and the carols, basically.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, and it, it fits well in, in, in that corner for, for the time being, so.
Yeah, um, so anyway, that was our meeting, that was the, the, the majority of our efforts. Um, to my knowledge, there's been no further feedback from the, the, um, public. I know, um, you know, we're watching public media and obviously paying attention to people that come in and out and have comments to make. So I think things are satisfied, which is good. Um, and we're making every effort to just make sure that, you know, we're as safe and accessible to everyone who comes in and uses the services. So we'll keep that up, but I think we're, I think we made a good first step and it's just gonna get better. So, good for everybody.
And Kathy, I'd just like to add that, you know, I, wh- when we decided on that location, um, the committee, including the community member, all kind of agreed. There is no great place to put the computers. It's sort of like the best of the not so great different options right now. And then I was in the library, uh, recently, saw the carols in place. And I can tell you the line of sight from the circulation desk to those computer screens.
Yeah.
Really good, really strong. And I think, you know, that was one of the most important things for us. If we move, when we move these computers, we wanna make sure that, you know, we, we can intervene if needed and that they're still accessible to the public that needs ADA accessibility, et cetera. So it's, you know, it's not great. But I, it did meet some mu- much of the very important criteria.
I think it's better, I think it's better. Now, I just, one of our, one of the committee's thoughts was, had to do with signage. So that's something we can follow up on when we next meet, but what now would be the best signage, where to put the message that we're sending, how we need to address that as well, so.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think the phrase that I've used a couple times is least worst, uh, option. But, um, but yeah, I, Bonnie's right, considering, you know, I mean, obviously there are a lot of options that we needed to, to juggle. But the most important ones, I think, are met with this new location. So, um, yeah, right now, I think the main concern is, is it workable? And it's workable. Ideal, no. Workable, yes. Workable, we can, we can, we can, we can work with.
We did consider a large cutout, um, image of Martha hands on hips. Looking over the computers. So that's always another option.
I am always willing to assist.
Would even be funnier is if we did all those, um, memes from Stranger Things with the guy going like this. Remember that one?
And I, uh, I, I keep coming back to Lori Lightfoot, the cardboard cutouts of Lori Lightfoot. They kept appearing in the city during the height of the pandemic, so that's.
That's a good one, too.
You know, we have, we do have those cutouts on the outside of the building.
Oh, God. Oh, my gosh. Oh, boy. We are nothing if not creative here. Okay, um, all right, so that, um, I think will wrap up the committee reports. Um, I know, um, in the, between now and January, um, I know that the budget, um, is, is gonna be in that, or is, is gonna be, uh, brought before the finance committee. And it's kind of in that weird area where I'm getting it started and then handing it off to Renee and working on that transition. So, um, that will be, that will be coming down the pipeline, uh, shortly, but.
When does it do, which is the village?
Um, you know, I don't remember the exact date. I will double, double check on that.
I think we sent the first draft and then our board votes on, and then it goes back. So we, let's just make sure we have a correct timeline.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I can, I can send Patina an email on that, no problem. Um, okay, so, um, with, I was gonna say, with that, um, jumping to new business, um, first item, uh, we're al- already gave a brief, uh, update on the status of the per capita grant application, um, and where that's, uh, where that's going. Um, so yeah, it sounds like we will try to have, um, a draft of that, uh, to the trustees, um, ideally before the, uh, monthly January meeting. So, um, we'll, we'll make sure to, uh, uh, talk to Renee and talk amongst ourselves and, and get that organized. Um, the second item, I think it was at, maybe it was at last month's meeting, Kathy, I know you had a question about, uh, liability coverage for the notaries. Um, and I believe you forwarded, you forwarded an email from Glenn at the village where he said that the, uh, libraries, the library employees are covered by the villages, um, their public officials liability coverage.
It's an umbrella, uh, coverage and all sorts of stuff. John, does that satisfy your question? You brought it up.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Um, the other thing that I wanted to, uh, mention is that part of the notary, whether it's a, whether you're applying for the first time or reapplying, um, all Illinois notaries are required to carry a five thousand dollar notary public bond. Um, and the company that we purchase our, uh, notary bond from is notarybonding.com. Um, and the package that we purchased has the five thousand dollar bond as well as, um, a thirty-one, thirty-one thousand dollar errors and omissions insurance coverage with that as well.
Is that individually or for the library?
I believe it's for the employer. I, I could, I'm not one hundred percent sure on that. Um, but it is, I was gonna say, it is included with the package that we, that we ultimately end up purchasing.
You know, you might wanna run that past call, let them know we're doing that. Um, whether that's redundant insurance or not, um, to let us know.
Okay.
What's the premium on that?
What's the, I'm sorry? Um, well, the total package, um, that we purchase, it's a total of a hundred and twelve dollars, which includes the bond, the insurance, the fifteen dollar filing fee, um, and a notary stamp.
Wow.
Per, per, per notary.
Okay.
And how many notaries do we have?
Three.
Okay.
Um, we had three previously with Eric, um, and then Anna became a notary shortly after Eric left, so.
You know, just send that, that information over to Glenn and ask his advice. Should that be covered or is it necessary? It's, it sounds like it's a great deal, but.
Okay, any, um, any questions about the, uh, the, about notaries and related topics? Um, oh, Anna, you had a question. It's, it's a four-year term. She asked us if it's a five-year term, but it's, it's, uh, four years. Okay. Okay, and then, uh, so moving on to the third item, um, which I will actually, I'll turn over to Bonnie. Um, she had, uh, sent me a screenshot from the, it was from, uh, State Senator Julie Morrison from the Highwood Public Library, which is just now starting a multimillion dollar, thank you, Bonnie. Uh, a multimillion dollar, um, expansion for their library. Um, and in her post, she, uh, Senator mentioned, uh, that she was able to secure two million dollars in state funding for this project. Um, so, uh, Bonnie mentioned, passed it to me as something to discuss for this, um, for this meeting. Um, I had all, I had already seen it. I, um, I've men, I've mentioned before, but I, uh, when I worked at Waukegan, I used to work with Carmen Patlon, who's the, uh, director at Highwood now. And, um, her, I will say, her fundraising skills, her grant writing skills, her ability to procure funding is unparalleled. It is unlike anything I have ever seen. And she, she did it for Waukegan and she's doing it for Highwood. Um, but that being said.
Katie, did you say that was Carmen or Laura?
Carmen. Um, the, I, I was gonna say, I am not, I believe, uh, Carmen ended up, I, I believe Carmen hired Laura, uh, maybe a couple of years after she started working there. I have other, uh, I have other colleagues that, that work there, that were, that have kept, kept me updated on what's happening there. But, um, yeah, Car- Carmen's, uh, skills in, in this area are just unprecedented. Um, but I will, I'm yammering a lot, so I will turn this over, over to you, Bonnie.
Oh, thanks, uh, Katie, you provided a lot of the background and even more than, than I, I could be aware of based on your, um, professional experience working with Carmen. Um, so, you know, I came across this and when I first saw it, I just was like, oh, so excited. I took a screenshot. And I thought, well, you know, let's discuss it and see if it's something that we want to get more information. Just do some more fact finding and, and, and talking, you know. As I read it again today, I realized, okay, well, you know, we're a library in Highwood. They're serving as both a library and a community center in providing mental health services and vaccines and things like that. So, you know, their scope is a little broader than ours. Um, but knowing and learning over the last couple of years about our building and how it's aging out and also seeing our community wanting some broader services from our library, maybe not vaccines. But, um, I, I thought it might be worth making the whole board aware of it and seeing if there were, you know, was interested in, in getting more, more information. Here's just a quick little, uh, photo from the screenshot of Senator Morrison and, um, the two leaders from the Highwood Library and, and Community Center.
I wonder if that's a, it's, it's a part of a block grant that the state, um, annually, you know, gives to communities that, um, sort of part of a, a, a larger package that's distributed among the various communities for various projects.
I can add a few things to that, John and Bonnie and everyone. Um, there are a variety of funding sources through the state of Illinois for building specific renovations, whether they're smaller projects or complete library building, um, renovation. So I'm connected to a group of library directors through Rails. Um, I remember my previous director at Glen Allen applied for a lot of the building grants. She did a lot of building projects when I was there. Um, and so there's not just one source. I do wonder in this post what the funding source was specifically. It just talks, it's just a state grant.
Right, right.
Because there could be a multitude of options for funding. And I think, you know, Bonnie's comment was astute. They may have applied for something a little bit more innovative because it's a little bit broader than just library. But LSTA, um, is state funded and so that would be an option for the library at some point. There could also be grants nationally as well. Um, so just wanted to throw that out there for additional context, if that would be helpful.
Good.
Renee, what is LSTA?
So, um, there is a specific grant for, um, the state in terms of, um, library capital and, um, capital projects can be funded through, I'm gonna look up the acronym. And if anyone else can find it for me, um, yeah, so they are, um, the Library Services and Technology Act. So it's funded through nationally, the IMLS organization, the Institute of Library and Museum Services, the same institution I mentioned to Janie and Bonnie about that award, the IMLS medal. That, by the way, Highwood won, um, and I think.
Carmen, uh, no, I was gonna say Carmen, um, was directly responsible for that and she was highly involved with Waukegan getting that as well at this, um, is almost ten years ago. So she, she's a wizard. Anyway, I'm so sorry, continue.
No, it's good context. Um, so LSTA funded, uh, funding is distributed out to the fifty states. Um, in addition to, uh, um, it's, it comes through, uh, federal funding, IMLS. Um, so there are a variety of channels through LSTA funding. Some are building and grounds. Some are more programmatic and technology-based, but, um, LSTA grants can be pretty broad.
That's a question on there, and I don't know if we, we know the answer, but the whole project is four point three million and they're getting two million in, in, in grants. Um, do you know any, about where the other funding's coming from at this point? Is that coming from other grants? Is that coming from?
I would imagine it's, it's coming from other grants, um, or possibly, um, it would possibly donations from community organizations. Um, I know that was one of, one of the things that Carmen actively pursued at Waukegan. Uh, we would frequently get large donations from, you know, like Lewis Fresh Market in Waukegan for social programs and stuff. So that, that, my guess is that's probably where a lot, a bulk of the remaining funding is coming from.
I could, I could find out. I know Don Serata, who, um, worked with us on their, on the feasibility study, uh, consulted on that campaign. So it'd be easy enough for me to find out where the other money came from.
Okay, no, it's just more that if there's other grant opportunities out there that, that, um, we, you know, potentially could look at.
I think, I, I wanna say, I think there's at least several fairly individual, fairly significant individual donors for that as well. But I'll find out.
Okay.
Great, yeah, I, um, when Bonnie sent this to me, I also, I took a very quick look at Highwood's website to see if they had any like news announcements or anything like that that maybe highlighted, you know, okay, this expansion is coming from, you know, is, or is being funded through these means. I didn't see anything right off the bat. Um, I mean, there's, I'm sure there's, there's something on their website somewhere in their meeting minutes or something along those lines, but didn't see anything immediately.
And, and can I ask the board if anyone can maybe provide a little more context where the state senator says, you know, she's happy to have assisted the Highwood Public Library and Community Center in securing the grant. So, again, I, I, I don't have much experience, okay, any experience in, uh, you know, grants, but, uh, so, so what, what, what role would the state center have played in that?
Well, I'll jump in with my very limited knowledge and I, first of all, Senator Morrison's office is directly across the street from the Highwood Library. So I think she's probably, you know, she's a good neighbor. She's right there every day. Her people are there every day of the week. Um, Brad Schneider, who is our, uh, our federal district, uh, representative in, in Congress, um, sends a, gosh, sometimes he sends a weekly newsletter. He's full of information all the time. Um, but several times, he sends a grants update, um, and I always go through them. And the vast majority, the vast, vast, vast majority, when you get into the weeds, are economically, um, depr- deprived, depressed neighborhoods, multicultural populations, um, low literacy rates, low income rates. So there's a lot of, um, targeting of, uh, need-based funding. And, and Eric and I, Eric had looked into this kind of stuff, but I think we often would not qualify for this stuff. The, um, the elusive state grant that we did receive for hundred thousand dollars to reimburse us for, uh, infrastructure, Senator Morrison was the one who facilitated that for us. Unfortunately, she's never been able to facilitate the collection of that.
Yeah.
That, that grant, so it's, Renee, that's another thing I sort of got on my notes to talk to you about. Forgot all these little things that are undone, but, um, that would be an exciting opportunity for us to, to finish up with. Um, and so she, that, that's kind of, maybe one of her, you know, her little things that she does. When you say how she facilitated, somehow she brought it to Eric's attention. Eric filled out the paperwork, did the grant writing. Um, Senator Morrison endorsed it and we did receive the grant. So, um, she's an important person for us to be, um, more closely involved with, I'm sure.
I'll just add to what you said, Kathy, and say that in my grant writing experience, it's really strategic in selecting who's going to create and write your support letters. And so it's often that, um, local and state, uh, representatives are the ones tapped for something like that. Ruth Richardson is one of our state representatives here in Minnesota and we had her write our grant letter for the Minnesota Department of Human Services grant. So that's not uncommon. Um, and it could even be, um, something along the lines of. Um and it could even be um something along the lines of what Kathy was saying, where the opportunity. Came up because of that representative. Um but in my experience, that's. That's how they're usually involved. And then, of course, great um opportunity for promotion. Um both for the library. Um I myself have facilitated tours of the library with local um representatives. I don't know if that's something that's done. In Lake Bluff, um but that could just be an in for some of those conversations for future opportunities.
Yeah, we have to rekindle those efforts. Um that should be a good goal of ours.
Great. Uh my my ask would be if we could put this into old business for our January meeting and then just, you know, John, if you can let us know what else you were able to learn.
Sure, I'll find out.
Yeah, uh Katie, maybe if if you have a opportunity or uh. To to connect with any of the folks that you know today at Highwood. Yeah, I would, I would just 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 like to learn more.
Yeah, for sure. Um. Yeah, I um I might, I was gonna say, I might actually be seeing a couple of them, not Carmen, but a couple of my other uh former department. Uh former department mates, uh we might be planning a holiday get together, so um. Uh yeah, I'll see, I'll see what what uh information I might be able to find.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. It's, no, it's definitely um, yeah, I'm definitely something to look into. It's, you know, an area I'm not particularly familiar with, so it's it's exciting to hear about. It's like, oh my gosh. All of these other opportunities that, you know, may have been otherwise unaware of. Um. Okay, and then with that, I'll jump to Janie's uh addition of uh, oh, before I jumped to that. Jill, uh Jillian posted in the chat that Sandy Hart might be worth talking to, um see if she might be able to assist with. Uh funding opportunities. Um okay, so uh jumping to uh the, this Friday's pizza party. Um I know I've emailed Janie already. We've got a little survey or a little online thing for staff to. Who are gonna be attending to click through and say how many people are attending and what their pizza preferences are.
And and what time are we scheduling this for when we close?
I was gonna say, my my understanding was shortly after we, like, building closes at six and we and we finish up with um. With all of the closing responsibilities by six fifteen at the latest, although usually it's sooner than that. Um so I would, I was figuring. So figuring somewhere in the, in the six fifteen to six thirty. Area.
Okay, and and do you have a an approximate number of adults?
Um Martha, do you've, I have those responses been going to you?
Um they have been going to the form. Uh we've had seven staff members respond and some are bringing families. Or their families, so um. Let's see.
Anna said, I should, I think she's got access.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
And I will say that 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 is gonna be sure at least one person because I have not yet responded yet. I'm waiting to see if my husband's available to come, so.
You can come without him.
Oh, I absolutely can. I'm just saying, there's just short at least one, but I I'm only filling out the uh, I'm only filling out the form once, so.
All right, well, maybe, you know, I I'm thinking I should probably order this. I I was thinking I I should probably order it sometime tomorrow. Do you think since since it'll be a probably pretty big order?
Eliza, I know we um, Eliza order is, was uh ordering pizza for one for like the, for our mini golf volunteers and whatnot. I think you, most of those were like the night before.
I was able to place orders the day of and they were very responsive. I do try and give them a couple of hours heads up, uh if it is. But I had no issues getting uh, I think. You know, six pizzas with less than twenty-four hours notice.
Okay, well, maybe um, maybe Katie or Martha, whoever has the numbers, if you guys could let me know Thursday, I could. Order the pizzas on Thursday.
I think, I think that's the deadline we gave to, we gave to staff so that we could get you that.
It is.
Okay, cool.
Okay, and um that, and then uh Kathy, I know I had mentioned to you um. Um obviously um, board members and and spouses, if they're interested, could could come too. I don't know if you wanna. Broaden it. To friends or anything like that. If that, it might not be necessary since we had that pizza party the night of setting up for mini golf, so.
Yeah, yeah, I would say at this point it's getting a little tight to be. For a Saturday, Friday night and you know, this week before Christmas, I think probably just keeping it to the group. Certainly the the. Any uh trustees would like to drop it, just to change, you know, by tomorrow, it sounds like.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah, Thursday, I think it's it's probably fine. If I get, if I can get the order in twenty-four hours or more in advance, I'll. Feel a little more comfortable and then um, I guess if there's any big kids coming, I should probably know about that because they can put away the pizza. But you know, Miles, I'm sure will maybe nibble on a bit of cheese and that's about it. For Martha, I don't know who else has kids that would be chowing down.
Um well, I was gonna say, I know we also, uh we use them to order for our staff in service and I know between, between Eliza and I, we vastly overestimated. How much pizza we would need. Um it was after everyone had eaten and we're just like, oh my gosh, we ordered like three or four pizzas, too many.
Okay, all right, well, I will, I will um.
It's fine, then we have leftovers.
We did. We were like sending whole pizzas home with people. Yeah, so uh but yeah, they it, they they definitely feed a crowd, so um we. Will will uh, we'll, we'll get those, those numbers to you, Janie, by, we'll, we'll figure that out for Thursday.
Thank you.
Janie, do you need any help with anything that night?
Um, you know, I was just gonna pick up some um, some paper goods and bring them over. Um. I don't know if you wanna volunteer to bring cups and sodas or bottled water or something at um. You know, Jenny, if if you're willing to do that, that would be a big help, but I I'm just gonna probably have the, uh you know, pick up the pizzas and bring them over myself.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if Ferrantino's delivers.
They do.
Oh, they do.
Oh, yeah. Yep, that's, that's what we've, we've done every time they.
Okay.
And you can place your order online and in advance.
Dang, this is getting better and better.
Uh Janie, I'll be there Thursday night so I can bring the uh soda and water Thursday night and stuff like that and cups.
You want me to, I can drop um. Paper goods and all that. I'm not exactly sure.
Oh, do you wanna do that, Kathy?
Sure, just give me a rough number and I'll make sure that everything is there for you.
Um yeah, Anna said uh that in the chat that we have, we still have tons of napkins, uh but mini golf really cleaned us out on plates and cups, so. Uh that would be helpful.
What about, what about plastic silverware?
Um I, I know we've got a partial container.
The pizza place will send all that too. They send all the plates and like the silverware.
Okay.
We, we had our block party and I think we had Donati's or Ferrantino's and they sent everything, sent all the cutlery and stuff.
Put that in your order. If they aren't eager to do that, let me know and I'll take care of it.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think, yeah, silverware, I was gonna say, probably won't be a huge issue. Um we, I mean, I. We usually, when we've ordered from them in the past, we'll usually order one or two decent sized salads. Um but we usually end up getting thin crust pizza, which does not require.
Okay.
All right. Um I I would say from, by count, we probably need forks for salad. And I know Ferrantino's didn't bring plates because I kinda ran out of plates for people on Saturday.
I'll just go get a bunch because you need to have them anyway.
Yes, okay.
I think we had to raid the craft supplies.
I might have forks down in, down in my supplies too.
So do you, do you need soda and water or anything like that then? Um.
I think I was gonna bring that, Bill.
Okay, all right.
I have soda and water on my list.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks everybody for pitching in. I didn't expect, didn't expect that. So um. Okay, I'll just, I'll just. Check with you guys that day and make sure everything's there.
Okay, um. All right, so uh with uh pizza planning, uh that brings, after pizza planning brings us to the. Uh director's report and.
Throw just two things real quick into old business at this point. One is, do, have we received or can we anticipate the thousand dollar stipend from the birthday bash?
Um it's two thousand and we have already received it.
Okay, terrific. And um, survey results, when uh Martha, I don't need a lot of information, but. Um let's think about getting that either into a long-term planning committee meeting. Or a board presentation or something, because I know we've been, we've had those for a few months and we wanna take.
Yeah, we we had talked previously about, um I think uh saving that for the January meeting once Renee was on board.
Good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, all right. Can I also um. Builds on on Kathy's quick old business items, just so um, you know, I I had the opportunity to to use the Stro reading room. Recently to help with some mini golf decorations. Wonderful to sit in there and I've been in the library a couple of times since. There's somebody in there on the, on the table. Working away, enjoying it. It's, it really is lovely. Um. Just any thoughts yet about a date? I just know the, the sooner we can get it on people's calendars, the better.
Um yes, actually, I just got, well, I got an update from LFI for the furniture. Um they didn't, weren't able to provide a specific date, but so far everything is still on track for January. Um which is what we had anticipated, so it doesn't seem like there are any setbacks to deal with. Um. And we actually, um Mark Stro came into the library today to uh grab something and uh. He and Jill, I I was only there for a little bit of the conversation, but it sounds like he, he was. Reiterating the whatever works for you, we're happy to to be flexible at um the same things he's been saying. Uh previously, was that accurate?
Yes.
Um so, yeah.
That reminds me, um Katie, that reminds me that I got an email a couple of days ago from um the blinds company.
Okay.
Um and they said they're going to ship them, I think they said on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Um they were backordered. Um so they'll be shipping them on the twenty-first, so they, you know, if they arrive before Christmas, I'll be surprised. Um. And um I was gonna get my husband to help. Put them up, but we're leaving right after Christmas and won't be back until January tenth, so. If, if anybody else is handy with a drill and wants to come over and put up the blinds once they're delivered.
I, well, and I think that's, that's also, I mean. I think if we wanna wait till you come, till you come, guys come back as well, um although I could, um I could potentially ask. Um Micah to do it with the um, who with the park district, we've had him, uh we have him come in periodically to assist with like. Changing out the lights, um some light issues, um which I actually have to follow up with him about.
Whatever, whatever you think.
I was gonna say, I don't, I don't know that there's a huge rush. Uh I mean, goodness knows, we're not getting a ton of sunlight in there right now.
We will though, we will. Um but yeah, I think I had, I I think they're going directly to the library.
Okay.
So.
Katie, I'm happy to help with that installation. If it, if it's, if it's what Eric was doing, which is just power drill, um climbing on my desk. Um I think we can handle that and it would be good. Um the, the sun right now, when it does shine. Likes to shine directly in the eyes of the people at the steady table, so. It's not at a good angle at the moment.
All right, well, let's see when the, when the blinds come in and we'll, uh we'll figure out what we wanna, we'll assess uh at that point and see what we wanna do, but. Okay. Any uh, any other uh additions? Oops, here I am clicking on stuff, hang on. Okay, there we go. Um okay, so for the uh interim or for the director's report. Um I do have to share the screen because the focus, of course, is uh was mini golf. On December third. Um. What a success this was. Um even, we anticipated it being a success, but none of us anticipated it being over five hundred people attending. That level of success. Um. It was, I mean, I was, I was telling staff afterwards, I'm like, that's literally a tenth of the Lake Bluff population that. That came through our doors. Um it was, it was incredible. Um everyone had a ton of fun. We had, we were hearing from patrons. Um after, during the event, after the event, you know, several days in the week afterwards, coming up to us and telling us how much fun their kids had, how much fun their family had. Um it was just, it was unbelievable. Um. And we had, uh we had a great number of volunteers uh from the trustees, from the friends. Um from, I believe the uh, the Boy Scout troop was, Anna was at where we got some of our younger volunteers.
Yes, we had a couple, troop forty-two volunteers.
Yeah, um and we had a ton of staff uh that helped us set up, that helped us the day of. Helped everything run smoothly, so um a huge round of applause for everyone who participated. Um but. Honest, especially Anna for spearheading all of the logistics for this and. Making sure that everything ran smoothly. It was an enormous job and she did, she really did a fantastic job with it, knocked it out of the park, so. Um this was, this was incredible. Um. We've uh, we've met already to discuss what worked well, what didn't work as well and make plans for. Um the next time that we do this type of program, how we can uh in, how we can uh. Divvy up the work amongst more people and uh, you know. Uh divvy up uh some more of the logistical responsibilities, so we don't have to have just Anna running all of the logistics. Um or being the primary person for, for all of the behind the scenes stuff. Um. But um, but yeah, it was, it was unlike anything that I've, I've ever seen in a library program and. Yeah, it it was, it was absolutely fantastic. So I included a lot of pictures. In this director's report and this was, it was really hard just to whittle them down to like the fifteen that I did put in here, so. Um lots of great pictures. It was, yeah, it wa- it was just fantastic.
Well, my kiddos had a good time.
Yep, yep, I know we saw some, some of you there. Um and we, yeah, we saw, a lot of the friends came out to volunteer. Um I even, I even had a passport appointment the week or in the days following uh the, the mini golf and one of. And one of those pointed me, said, oh, you were the one running the nightmare before Christmas hall. That one was awesome. So, yeah.
Yes, congratulations. It was fantastic.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. Um and then the, the last item that I wanted to highlight in the uh director's report was our staff in service, which happened. Um a few days after our November meeting. Um so it was uh, the day went really well. We had, um as I mentioned before, we listened to two presentations. One of them was a pre-recorded video um from Eddie Kristen, um who is a reference librarian and has. Uh and had previously worked as a security guard at the Warren Newport Library. Um his presentation was on empathy and enforcement. Um about um making sure that staff are consistently um. Upholding library policy with patrons, but also recognizing when you can. Uh recognizing how to enforce policy with compassion. Um rather than just a blanket, you know, you're not obeying the rules, um but applying a software more, hey, you probably didn't know this, but. You know, this is, this is how thing, you know, how we do things in the library. Let's get you set up in a way that, you know, uh in a different area or something like that. Um he also talked about uh knowing where, what types of behavior um require, will require staff to draw hard boundaries. And knowing and being able to recognize the difference in those uh situations so that you can. Um so that you can provide consistent, clear service to patrons and. Uh support and protect staff as well. It was a really great presentation. Um and I'm uh going. And I'm hoping that it's, that at some point we can uh partner with him again to talk about other uh library related issues. He's done a lot of different presentations on different topics, um but he, he did a really great video for us. Um and that was actually, he did that for us free of charge because he uh was not able to be there in person like he, like we had initially scheduled. So that, it was a really. So that it was a really, really great value and it was very, very kind of him to to do that for us. And then we also had Crystal Larson from the LGBTQ Center of Lake County. Who did roughly two, two and a half hour presentation about. So basic topics and terminology that some people might not be as familiar with. We talked about. Implicit bias, we talked about recognizing privileges that we may not realize that. That people have that members of the LGBTQ community may not. It was, it was a very engaging presentation. I think lots of really good discussion. Unfortunately, unfortunately, the presentation was fantastic. It ended up being unfortunately timely because that was also the weekend. Where the tragedy in Colorado Springs happened about twenty four hours later, so it. I feel like that really underscored the importance of why we. This type of training is especially important and so something something we should. Continue to focus on as we look at new opportunities for training staff, but. It was, it was a very successful day, got good feedback from from the staff who were there. Yeah, and so so I I think that's something we definitely want to make sure that we're able to do more frequently, since I know that I think the last time we were able to do. A staff in service was, I think, about five years ago.
That's way too long. That's way too long of a gap, yeah, to do an in-service and, you know, it really sounds like the two speakers you had. Were right on point for, you know, what's been going on, not only nationwide, but what's going on with us.
Yeah.
Right now, so so that that was great. You said that the the video video presentation was on empathy and what was your second?
Empathy in enforcement.
Oh, in. In enforcement.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Gotcha, okay. That's a, that's a fine line to walk.
It really is, and he, one thing I was really struck with that particular presentation is that I feel like he gave us a lot of practical examples. And scripts and things that you can use in everyday encounters with patrons. I felt like it was very, very. Practical and applicable information.
Will that video be available for future staff to use so you can cultivate that as a resource?
Yep, and as soon as I before you before you jumped on, I realized, I was like, oh, I was going to share that on the staff blog and never got around to it. And I'm like, I'm gonna make myself a note to to put that on there. Yes, it was, it was a link to YouTube presentation, so. Definitely make sure to make that available. Okay. Okay, so that's all I have for the director's report. Is there anything else that anyone wants to? Wants to bring up for this meeting? All right, so with that, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second.
That John?
Yes.
And then Kathy. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned at eight sixteen.